Good evening, Board. Erin Santi, Principal at Phoenix Town Rising Academy. I first want to welcome back here at Javier and Reyna to TMS. Welcome back. I wish you guys were as cool then as you are now. Just a few things from PTRA. Want to thank our elementary teacher, Maddie Macias. She's been working hard on boosting reading scores. We have students K through five right now who have increased an average of fifteen words per minute in the first six weeks of school. Fifteen words per minute per student in the first six weeks of school, which is great. Also want to thank our secondary teacher and our office manager Heather Sflood and Denny Goodwin. They've been working on attendance efforts. We've had an eight percent increase from September to October in our attendance. And we've had six of the last seven days of perfect attendance for our middle school, which is kind of a big deal. And then finally, we've got our first monthly pizza with PTRA event happening at the Grotto next Wednesday. If you guys want to come by, it's five thirty to seven. We're buying. And it's an opportunity for us to connect with our families and try to build some community with with our online school. So it's good to get together in person. Also, I am here to represent Shauna and Phoenix Elementary Positive, so pretend like I'm shorter and more hair and a little bit more bubbly. So she said she's unable to join because she's over at the Dia de los Muertos at PES right now. That's being led by Laura Mallett and Susie Serna. Wonderful event aims to honor the loved ones that are no longer present. She's been a this has been a collaborative effort among our classes, staff, and community members. It's been a busy but exciting month with the Pirate Parade and Halloween Parade. Their newly formed PTA is already having an impact as families showed up en masse to decorate our pirate floats. And the wraps were brought to us by Indigo Creek Outfitters. That was cool. I'm sure you guys all saw that. It feels great to be a junior pirate. And finally, a big shout out to Marla Dantino and Zoe Boils for hosting ODE Director Dr. Charlene Williams. It was an honor to have her visit PES and see all the amazing love and care our staff shows our students. Dr. Williams sent a follow-up email expressing a positive sentiment to her crew. Feels great that she validated what they already know over there. That's it from Phoenix Elementary.
Thank you, Mr. Santi. Good evening, everyone. Kent Valier, Principal at Orchard Hill. And I don't know if you know or not, but I used to be Assistant Principal at Phoenix High School. You knew, right? Yeah. Anyway, so but I when, you know, I transitioned up to Orchard Hill. I thought I want to make some connections between fifth grade students and the high school and create some excitement to be a pirate someday. So today, one of those connections came to fruition. Kyle Carson's class went down. We spent fifth period with David Ford. They pounded some nails, cut some wood, played some Jenga. We took a tour around the CTE wing. The kids were really excited. They wanted to run two laps around the track. So they ran two laps around the track. And thanks to Susie and Sedexo, they got to eat lunch at the high school in the Commons and they saw the window where the nachos come out and they were like, oh, my God, this is the greatest thing ever. So it was really fun to see them. And I think it is important that we get our elementary kids excited to be a pirate someday and excited to graduate as well. So I want to thank the high school, Kalen, and your team for helping us do that. Next month, we're taking another fifth grade class to Jessica Rollins' class, and she's going to get some clay. And they're going to do some art and be led by some of the advanced art students. So that will be great. Recently, some student surveys data was released, and I'm really proud of our staff and the sense of belonging they've established with our students. On the question of do you feel you belong at school? On a national percentile rank, our sense of belonging came out at the eightieth percentile, which means better than eighty out of a hundred schools nationally. So I thought that was a that was a pretty good accomplishment. So I'm proud of them for that. And lastly, I want to thank Mr. Barry. It's like, once a principal, always a principal. And a lot of us sometimes have students that are getting some challenges with behavior and pro-social skills. And Mr. Barry made a phone call to a family, and I'm really excited to say that the student that we've kind of been working with is really, really improving. And it's making a big difference in that classroom. I see his head up higher, and it's just a joy to see him make the progress in that area. So thank you very much. And it just reassures the Phoenix talent way that we're all here to support students, no matter what position that we're in and what job we do. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Kalen, before you go, we have citizen comments after this, and then we have. So if you want to wait and go with them or whatever you want to do.
You're good? They're good. They're ready.
Okay, the training wheels are off.
Yeah, they're ready. Hi, Board. Kalen Cross, Principal of the high school. A lot of stuff, just like everyone mentioned, going on the last couple of weeks. But I do want to give some staff shout outs. I know that our school board reps will be talking about homecoming week and all the excitement that went along with that. There are some staff behind the scenes that make that magic happen. And so I wanted to thank Lisa Robin, who is our leadership teacher. She is a fearless leader. She's willing to try anything, and she supports students in making dreams come true. Also, Breezy Chapman and Brenda Salee, who without them, we would be unable to have our wonderful parade each year. Along with that, Officer Hull and the city of Phoenix, who also make that happen. So I wanted to shout out to them. Our multicultural club and their advisor, Angelica Mendoza, who's one of our school counselors, hosted our homecoming dance, and it was amazing. Great attendance and just a safe, fun event for students. And so I want to shout out to her and that group. They also hosted some Day of the Dead activities today, including some face painting at lunch and an altar for Day of the Dead. And that is just a great way for our students. And during homecoming week. So just a shout out to them. And that's all from us.
Thank you. I want to excuse Michael. He's not here tonight, so I'm filling in for him. But I have to, I know that maybe my fellow board members might chime in too, but I had such a blast at the parade, like we always do. It's really good to connect with our community and to see everyone with smiling faces and coming out and supporting that event. It was pretty magical, for sure. Anyone have anything else? Oh, Amy. Sorry, Amy.
Amy with food service here, and I just want to say we've had a blast participating, and me especially, because I get to not be stuck at one school. So I got to pop to the middle school and see the giant dinosaur during lunch. And then I got to hop over to the elementary at Talon Elementary and get kids running up, giving me hugs, loving my long red hair. And then get kicked out because I was in the trunker spot. So I'm like, oh, gotta move. So if you go visit next year, don't park in the spots. And then I just really want to actually get up here and thank John McAlpin and his team for all of the food service facilities that has been going on. And since he's not here, I'll give you a little, like, food service facility update here. We've got things going on, like walk-in coolers about to come in at Talon Elementary and Phoenix Elementary. We've got brand new ovens coming into the two elementaries. We've got a HydroBeckshin oven coming into Talon Middle School here that I'm really excited to play with. Looking at possibly another one of those turbo chefs at the high school, looking at new electricity flooring. I mean, John's team has just been really busy, and I have to give a special shout out to Candace Selden, who actually you don't see, but behind the scenes, she does a lot for facilities and for us. There's a lot of bids and a lot of paperwork that goes behind. It's not just go into the store and buy something. She does a lot of work there to keep it all organized and keep the team up to speed and getting these updates going.
Thank you, Amy. Anyone else?
So thank you, Amy, for the parfait. After our last meeting, the pumpkin parfait does not ever disappoint. Really love those. And then I saw it was so exciting. So shout out to Joe and to Mr. Ford and to Mr. Valier. It was so exciting to pop on Facebook and see the fifth graders at high school. And I was sharing it with my coworker. Look what they're getting to do. And we actually thought that they built the Jengas. We were like, it's like, look, they built their own Jenga, you know? And she said, well, I wish in fifth grade I could have done something like that. So anyway, kudos. Thanks for that. And to Mr. Ford for providing that opportunity for those students as well.
I have something real quick. I just want to shout out to Sergeant Lehman, the SRO here at Talon Middle School. I see him almost every day when I'm picking up my daughter, and we have good chats. But he was also one of the trunks at the trunk or treat, and I thought that was so awesome. So I just wanted to shout him out.
Okay, that's really great. We now have time for citizen comments, and I'll read our little burb about that because I believe we have some people who would like to speak today. And I'm gonna, there are people online, right? Yeah, I'm gonna ask them right now. Okay, so Dawn's going to check in with you to see if you'd like to speak, and I'm going to read this little bit right here. As a reminder, school board meetings are meetings of the school board held in public, not meetings with the public. As a general rule, the board will not engage in discussion with the public during this portion of the meeting. When your name is called, come forward and state your name. If joining virtually, please use the raise hand feature. Address and identify the organization, if any, that you represent, keeping your remarks brief and respect the three-minute time limit. Complaints about staff members cannot be discussed in open session and must be handled through the complaint procedure. So do we have anyone online who's interested in? Okay, we could go with these cards. So we have, please forgive me because I'm not sure, but someone with the last name of Lynn, tell me your first name. Laura, okay. I couldn't tell by the last one. I don't want to say the wrong thing. So if you would like to go, that'd be great. It's on. Hello?
All right.
You want to make sure you, there you go.
Laura Lynn Glassford Elder. I've had three children who are in the Phoenix Town School District. My youngest went to ODP for K through fifth. And for most of those years, I was on the parent advisory committee board. So I spent some time with Mr. Barry there. So I had five minutes, and I can't spread quite that well. So we're going to try and squeeze this down. So basically, ODP just became a real passion project for me. I loved the mentorship, the outdoor time, outdoor education, the electives, the parent involvement, so many things about it. And during my time at ODP, I did see a lot of students whose families where the kid would graduate out at fifth grade. And then they would send their kids to, especially during open enrollment, over to like John Muir or to Siskiyou or Willowind. And I remember thinking like, man, it'd be awesome if Ashland kids wanted to come to ODP. We could reverse that. That would be great. So as you know, we worked with Mr. Barry, with Shanetta, who was the president at the time. And now that she worked on it, with Erin Mahaney, Jason Lynch, this is Paul, who was our strategic planner, working on the strategic plan and looking to expand. I know I personally spend a lot of time going to those other schools, talking to them about what worked for them, what didn't work for them, looking at what their curriculum was, how they structured their days, all that kind of stuff. Contacting other project-based learning, outdoor education, environmental sciences groups across the country and talking to them as well. I worked on that. The other board members worked on that. The teachers worked on that. I'm pretty sure Mr. Barry worked on that, too. And so, so, you know, like eight years ago or so, I thought we kind of had a plan as far as going to an K through eight, what the classroom splits were going to be. About, you know, K, pre-K, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, which worked with the Oregon State Predation for Teachers. And so I was very excited, even though my daughter has graduated and is now in the middle school. When I heard that the annex was getting approved, I was really excited about that. I was really excited to go see the master plan. But I did kind of feel a little bit disappointed just in that ODP was left as a blank. And that really impedes the parents at ODP and the board to be able to start doing any kind of capital campaign themselves, to do any fundraising, to do any grants, you know, apply for any grants if they don't have something to show for it. So I really hope that the board can have that conversation with the school board and have the conversation with the path board as to what is going to happen with ODP. So that we can go ahead and get started on having a building plan, having an outline, having a new strategic plan that we can then present. I keep saying we, still saying we, so that that can be presented and we can move forward. I was really hoping it would happen before COVID in the fire, like kind of derailed everybody's plans. But I was hoping that at least my daughter would get eighth grade in a new facility. But still, I would love to see it still moving forward. So.
Thank you so much.
A bridge diversion.
You can submit anytime.
Okay.
We can have that. So we can all see it because there have been some comments put in online, and we all have those tonight, even the ones Denise is always good at keeping keeping track of those for us. So Mari, this would be Lily's mom. Marcy, so I'm really, I'm sorry, I can't.
Hello. My name is Marcy Locke. I'm really just here to introduce my family, Lily, who is who's going to ODP. She's in first grade this year, and I've been hearing all the talk about the new location and all, you know, I see the parents so excited about it. And I went to the last meeting, and what I picked up from going to that meeting is that we're still working on this strategic plan. And that this plan needs to be put together or put on paper or basically I'm trying to figure out. Wow, I know that these families have, you know, we're just coming in. We're new. I love the program. At this stage of my life, I'm not a young mom, okay? I'm an older mom. But my number one focus is paying attention to what goes on around Lily, even when she's at school. I really full on, you know, she was, she never even went to daycare. So she was not used to being around new people, really, strangers when we signed her up. I love the program. They've given me a lot of freedom to keep an eye on what goes on, to just be able to have more, more control really about, you know, what kids pick up in school, what, you know, how kids treat each other. I know that kids can be mean to each other even at a young age, and that we are in charge of teaching them really, ultimately, how to be kind to others. I come into the class, I, you know, I help, I'm able to help with their learning, and I see the need of more help in the classrooms. You know, substitute teachers, and I just, I see that even after COVID, a lot of teachers have moved on. And so I love that when we can, as parents, we can come in and pick up some of that slack. And I see that, you know, that it makes a difference. And so I'm hoping, other than just being here to introduce myself and having my voice heard, because, you know, I do keep coming to these events. And I'm, you know, I'm ultimately, I know I had to speak up for our family ultimately. But I hope that whatever this process is, so that Lily can benefit from this new facility, the new, you know, all of these awesome things, that we can move forward. Instead of just, it seems like to me, and no disrespect to the panel, I know there's a lot of projects and things, but it's going on fifteen years, eight years. And I would have thought, because I'm a salesperson, you know, when you come in and do your presentation, that there's at least an idea on the concept, an idea behind this program. So I don't know where the disconnect is coming in, but whatever it is, whether it's putting a pen to paper and actually getting this outline done, that we can get through this process so we can move forward. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Do we have anybody online? Thank you so much for sharing.
Did you fill out a card?
Okay, so yeah, if you want to go.
Hi, my name is Julia Longo, and I'm on ELP. I'm a parent also ODP, and I wrote my comment because I could talk forever. As a parent to three students at the Outdoor Discovery Program, I kindly asked the school board, in collaboration with the district and ODP families, to start drafting a plan for moving forward with the new facilities on Culver Road for the Outdoor Discovery Program. ODP has grown immensely since inception, thanks to a parent grassroots effort in 2009. And the current location is barely adequate to the needs of the students, the community, and the program. Looking at the popularity, success, and expansion of similar programs in the Rogue Valley, combined with ODP successes and popularity, better student assessment results compared to other similar options in the district, as well as a long waitlist. We hope for the program, the hope for the program is to increase its current capacity, restructure the multi-grade classes, and expand to eighth grade. As well as provide the student with a safer and better facility to learn, including outdoor learning space. The Outdoor Discovery Program has a strategic plan designed with the district and an independent consultant that outlines a potential growth path. There is synergy with the Boys and Girls Club and a strong interest in collaborating with with both parties to share facilities and start launching a capital campaign. My hope for the Outdoor Discovery Program is not only to fulfill the needs of the community locally, but also a large by becoming an incubator of the leaders of the future, providing academic excellence and an example of environmental and social sustainability. Having said, what I wanted to say about the Outdoor Discovery Program, I just wanted to ask the board if you had a chance of wearing your superhero capes for this Halloween just passed. I don't know if you get this enough, but we really think that you guys are all superhero, and we thank you for your commitment to the community.
Thank you so much. Okay, we're going to move on to the student representatives. So we can, we can start with Garrett if you're ready.
Yeah, Garrett Walker. What I did my report over more, it was more or less an observation of our homecoming week. And what we do is we have Spirit Week where it's a unique thing every day. Monday was during Anything But a Backpack Day, Tuesday. Yeah, anyway, it's these unique things that our little community does. And something I've noticed through that is it brings everyone closer together. There's less, you know, separation of people. Everyone's getting along, having a good time. And you just feel happy. But some that we should try to do more is fund things like that for our community because it brings everyone closer together and ultimately is just an overall good for our school.
Thanks, Garrett.
How about me? Well, what I was going to talk about today was how I'm really thankful for everyone that's helped me with the fundraiser that we've been putting on that we started and we ran mostly during the parade. Which involved many different things, but I want to say thank you to, first of all, Mr. Joe Zavala. He's helped us a lot with promoting that. A great amount. And a lot of our culinary teachers and how a lot of the staff came together to help us, like, make this actually happen, which is still going on. It's still an ongoing process, but that's something that's been going really well. And I'm proud to talk about that. And the school spirit has been, has been great this year since like, ever since like compared to the last couple of years is going, is, it's been a lot better. And we have a great staff this year, like the teachers. I don't think I can name anyone that's hasn't been there for us. Been there for us and on a. On a certain level. So that's what I have to say, yeah.
Hobbie, you want to share what you're fundraising for?
Oh, for the hyena, the fires in the hyena, sorry if I didn't mention that. So yeah, so for all the rebuilding and. For whatever they need, everyone affected from the fire, that's all the proceeds are going to there.
Appreciate your work there so much. I know you have connections there and it's very special.
Guys, I heard on one of the, I saw you on the news. I heard the goal was five thousand, right? And I heard. How, where are you currently?
Like around three thousand after expenses. And we still have like, it was around three thousand eight hundred, but before expense, after expenses is around three thousand, but we're still. Have a couple of events to do before we're done, so.
Do you know what your next event?
It's gonna be courtyard events with the school.
Court, did you say courtyard?
Yeah, courtyard events with the school for, for students to have. To, for students to be able to give their donations. Yeah.
She's asking because she wants to be invited if you have something that would include us. Rena?
Hello, oh, um, so I'm going to talk about the carnival that we had on Halloween. I think it went really well this year because we collaborated with DECA. Which definitely made things a lot easier. Um, it made the process go by so much faster. And this is my first year doing. Um, the carnival and from what I've heard is that it's been. It got a little slow after covid, which is expected. But um, these past few years have been getting better, better, which is what we're hoping for. Um, and something else is the Day of the Dead event that is happening at P E S right now. Um, I just came back from there for a little. Um, and it's just really great to see all these people get together and celebrate things like that. And another thing that me and Miss Cross and a lot of other people have been working on is the Work to Be Well. And if you don't know what that is, it's um. It's where leaders in the school come together and we try to um, focus on how. To make the school better for mental health. And we've been trying to get together ideas about how. How to get that going. So it's a work in progress, but I'm hoping that this year we can. Get something started and have the school be better. And yeah, that's it.
Thank you. Hobbie?
Alright, so what I wanted to talk about was the end of the quarter. I myself and a lot of my peers felt very like overwhelmed by all that, but I think. We all worked really well um, and collaborated really well with the teachers. Um, to get where we needed to be and to succeed with our grades. As a link crew leader, I saw a lot of my freshmen pushing to receive a grade that they wanted, even if they weren't succeeding in the way that they. Probably could have been, but they were really trying as hard as they could at the end and um. Especially on the, right after the end of the homecoming week and then Halloween right after. That's a lot to deal with on the end of a quarter because you have so many events and so many assignments due. Especially with upperclassmen, you have a lot going on, so I just really appreciate all the teachers and. All the events going on and how everyone is just like really come together, even though how stressful it's been. And Hobbie did want to give you a shout out for the hyena drive because it was really impressive.
I have to say that I miss the months that we don't have student reps on our board. It's nice to have you all here. Um, next on our superintendent report.
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair tonight. Um, I just want to reiterate uh, that it is so, I'm so thankful for this board to continue the tradition of. Having student reps to the board. Um, I was, I hated to miss that meeting last time, but two, I'll share with you four. Uh, when I talked to staff, to the board, uh, to people that were at that meeting, they were blown away. Uh, by you four and that's why you're here today and you just proved it with uh, how you share and uh, how you present yourself, so uh, thank you all. Um, I just have a few things and uh, what Principal Schleif didn't say, she honor, uh, Marla and Zoe did an amazing job, but. Uh, Mrs. Schleif did an absolutely phenomenal job hosting Dr. Williams and showing her around the school. At Phoenix Elementary and it was just so amazing just to see her. Uh, really passionate and excitement and that came through and we definitely got that feedback from Dr. Williams after that visit, so. Uh, we hope to, when she's down here again to um. Uh, host her at another school and and just show off our district, so it's a good relationship to have, to have. Um, that uh, connection with the Director of the uh, Oregon Department of Education. Uh, speaking of O D E, you know that there are many reports that we need to submit uh, to O D E, we just finished with Division twenty-two. Um, next in December, we will have the Integrated Program Grants and S I A, our Student Investment Account. Um, to approve and then in January, uh, you'll be hearing and you probably heard um. A, a lot of this already this fall and at the OSBA Regional uh, Early Literacy Grant Funding uh, that's going to be coming through and due. Um, in January, so we'll have that report for you. Uh, finally, just want to update this out of state activity trips that you have in your board packet, uh, just to let you know that and that's all I have.
Thank you, Brent. Um, we now move into the consent agenda and uh, we have that for your approval and and would like to hear a motion.
I move to accept the consent agenda.
Thank you, Dawn.
I'll second.
Thank you, Rebecca. Any opposed? And now we're going to move on, we have the minutes from our last board meeting. Um, and now we can move in, I'm excited about this part, um, for our action items for tonight. Um, we have several different items to talk about, um, one is the Culver Road uh, master plan. Um, so I don't know if you want to speak about that, just a second.
Yeah, just to share, you have, uh, really appreciate Z C S who did a lot of work on that, had uh, several meetings, all the partners. Uh, that had input on that and um, really incredible document that out uh, outlines what. Um, that piece of property could be, so we're really excited about that and um, that's for your approval uh, today. Um, just as a, as a master plan, this is kind of a step in moving forward. To the next phase.
I move to approve the Culver Master Plan as presented.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Rebecca, thank you, Sarah. And then we'll go to the vote. Oh, discussion, sorry, thank you for helping me. See, Rick should be really do- doing this show, he was telling me earlier. Do you have any discussion, Rick?
I just want to say that uh, I was totally impressed with the master plan. When I saw it. Uh, I think it's well thought out and really, really excellent. There's one caveat though that I. I feel we have to do and that is. Well, like a, in a housing development, C C N Rs, conditions, covenants and restrictions. That as far as any buildings that would might be built by. The various tenants. That uh, we should maintain uh, s- some type of uh, restriction on that or at least. Be able to look at it. Oversee that. But uh, also it's my information or I was told that. This is a master plan, it can be changed if we have to. And yeah, this is down the road, but uh. Right now we've got something to go forth, go forward with, so I really like it. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Anyone else? We'll move to vote, Nancy?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Paulie?
Yes.
Okay, so now we have something exciting, I have to say that we went to an OSBA meeting this week, that's Oregon School Board Association on Monday. And we were there with um. Lots of school board members from. All over the area, I would say Jackson, Josephine County, um, and. And Klamath, yeah, and Klamath Falls. And I am so grateful that we have such active members on our board and I'm really proud of Dawn and Sarah and what they've done to contribute and. This is just an extension of that. Um, so this would be uh, we'll be voting on um, our official vote for Sarah. Uh, for the OSBA L P C Legislative Policy Committee. So I don't know if we, if we want to, uh, do you have anything to um, say about this, Brent? Okay. Any discussion about this one? Okay, do I hear a motion?
I move. I move to cast a vote for Sarah Crawford for OSBA Legislative Policy Committee, Southern Oregon Region, position number five.
I'll second.
Thank you, Dawn, thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you all for the confidence that.
Are you kidding me? You're amazing. Yeah.
Through this process, it really is, um, I so really love working with Dawn and um. Learning more about how to better educate for our district at, at the state level.
Okay, we'll move to vote, Nancy?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Sarah?
I abstain.
Rick?
Yes.
Dawn?
Absolutely, yes.
And I vote yes. You have a lot of support, Sarah.
Thank you.
I need it.
It's true, it's a lot, it's a big commitment for sure. Um, this one is, um, oh, this is an exciting one too. This is uh, for the Rural Schools. Um, caucus and we'll be voting on that and maybe, I don't know, maybe um. I'm going to ask Dawn to say a minute, a thing about it, so even our student reps will understand what this is.
So about a year and a half ago, um, OSBA, well, first of all, um, rural schools were saying like during covid, they didn't have, feel like they had a voice. Upstate and Salem and um, actually before covid, there's been some issues where some things were passed and it's been a challenge for rural schools to. Follow the law because of restrictions that they have maybe in their community. And so um, OSBA was hearing how rural schools felt like they needed an, another voice. And so they started the Rural Schools Committee, I wa- was asked to be on it at the very first meeting, which was exciting. And so we've worked really hard to come up with bylaws, come up with a plan and so. If it's voted through, we will have a rural schools caucus, which will add one more member from a rural, from a rural school to be on the Oregon School Board. Association as a voting member and a one more L P C person, which is really important because sometimes we have conversations. About legislation and it's good to know if it's going to work in your region, sometimes things come up and it's like, well, that will be a challenge for our region because of. Bussing or because, you know, it's one of the laws that I was working with, they were talking about, oh, just have your families ride the public bus and I'm like. Well, that isn't going to work in some, in some areas, so um. So it's really important to have um, the rural voice and I'm really excited that this um, caucus has started. And I really hope to see it. Just go um, forth and help um, schools have a voice and help um. Just make things better for, for the schools and the community and, and there's just different trainings and stuff that would be more accessible for rural schools. But I will entertain any questions if anyone has me.
Phoenix Town Schools qualifies as a rural school, correct?
Yes. Not just because I helped make the qualifications, by the way.
Totally.
Just like to say.
This is an example why it's helpful to have a member of your board serving on a state level board, F Y I.
And this is not a common thing to have these caucuses within that, so. Um, within O S B, at O S B A.
This is the second caucus in O S B A, but the N S B A, the National School Board Association. Has been having a lot of conversation about how to support rural schools too throughout the United States. And um, Oregon, if this passes, will be the very first um, state that will have a rural school caucus. And they're having a rural school. Meeting, N S B A is, Sarah can help me out, like a Zoom webinar and I believe we have some people from Oregon speaking and um. N S B A has asked for us to help um, other, other states to um, come up with a rural school caucus as well, so it's really exciting times. And it's something that's wanted nationwide, so it's. It's really exciting.
The other caucus we have is the um, Co- Color Caucus. That we have and, and I know Nancy is on that um, for the state as well. Do I hear a motion?
I move for the adoption of O S B A's Resolution One, which creates the Oregon Rural School Board Member Caucus. And designates a seat on the O S B A Board of Directors and Legislative Policy Committee.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Nancy, thank you, Sarah. We'll go to a vote, Nancy?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Rick?
That's okay. It's over you because you, you was in front of me, so. Rick?
Yes.
And Dawn?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, now we have the Resolution Two, which stops the proposed amendments at the O S B A bylaws. Can you talk about this a little bit, about what that is, or Dawn?
Um, so. So um, O S B A has bylaws and the Board of Directors um, spent some time during their. Retreat going over some bylaws that were needed to be changed, just. Things came up that were like, oh, well, this isn't actually working very well, so we, there are some minor changes in there. Um, if you have questions, I'll try to remember what the answers are to them, but we went through it very, very diligently, the Board. Of Directors is for every, a school board throughout the whole entire state and so there was a lot of conversation. And I feel like it's, there's, I think there's some conversations we still need to have and change a few other things. But for now, I think this is a good, a good working document and a step better than what we have used in the past.
Does anyone have any questions? Yeah, to one page, right? Okay, can I hear a motion?
I move for the adoption of O S B A's Resolution Two, which adopts the proposed amendments to the O S B A bylaws.
I second that.
Thank you, Sarah, thank you, Nancy. We'll move to a vote, Nancy?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, we'll move to our recess. How many minutes?
Ten.
Oh, seven.
Ten minutes.
Okay, now is our information discussion, we're gonna start with the facilities and bond update.
Yeah, John's not able to be here, but we do have a couple things going that, uh, are fairly exciting, you know, we've had some planning, um, at Culver, uh, Road Facility, as you heard tonight, uh, we meet with CSA to talk about that annexation, and what the conditions that, uh, we're hoping to have when we submit that to the City of Talent, um, and I know some board members are involved in that, so I look forward to learning more about kind of those conditions, um, and that might be where we discuss the CCRs, uh.
So when you say the CSA, what do you mean, for those folks that don't?
Oh, it's our, uh, land consultant, um, uh, Craig Stone and Associates Land Consultant, who works to get our property in the UGB, and work on the annexation process. Um, then also, as you know, we, we're gonna have some tennis courts out there, but we did a different plan and started moving them, uh, to a space at the high school, so those are also going to be kind of in the final, um, planning stages, we'll have a meeting next week, uh, to finalize that, and then submit those, and hopefully start on those fairly soon. I don't wanna give timelines, because timelines can get messed up, sometimes, uh, but really excited about that project as well, to have actually tennis courts and, and emerging, um, you know, we have girls tennis now, and hopefully to have boys tennis in the future, so, uh, and then, that's it.
And now we can have our financial update. I know, it's just really nice to have you back here.
I'm bored, Yasmin Carvina is Director of Accounting. So, um, this financial report has an update through September of this year, uh, the last one was through June. So, um, the highlights for this report would be our ending fund balance, it's about a million six hundred thousand more that what we were projecting on the adopted budget. One of the reasons is because we already had a hundred eighty-six thousand dollars over what we were estimating as an beginning fund balance. And, uh, also the state school fund, when we prepared the budget, we prepared with a nine point nine billion funding, and we ended up getting the ten point two, so that, um, is bringing an extra six hundred sixty-three thousand to the, to the budget. Uh, we can also point out the House Bill forty-two-six, we got a little bump, um, that the ODE provided. Fortunately, it's another eighty-one thousand that we'll be receiving, and this is for the twenty-two, twenty-three allocation. We're still, um, I'm still trying to find out if we'll be able to receive the twenty-three, twenty-four allocation the same year, or if we need to wait until next year to receive it, so, once we get more information about that, we'll let you know. Besides that, the Common School Fund looks like it's producing a lot more interest for the schools, so we'll receive another fifty thousand, so, overall, it's mainly revenues and the extra monies from last year that are increasing the ending fund balance projection. Um, other than that, I already included a little bit of, of what we have working on negotiations for salaries and benefits. Um, the increase is not as high, because we do have a one point seven five FTEs that are not going to be higher after all, that we have planned for in the budget. So if not, the difference would have been about two hundred fifty thousand more of what I'm showing in salaries and benefits. Right now, the increase is only eighty-two thousand, and a little bit lower on, um, insurance costs, because some of the new people that were hired did not get insurance, so then, you know, the cost is lower. Um, so that's it for general fund. For capital projects fund, right now, we don't have a lot going on for the bond, so we still have a four point eight million dollars through September thirtieth. Uh, we have been receiving a pretty good chunk, it's about, it's about five percent now the interest on the, um, LGIP account. So that money that is sitting there is receiving pretty good interest. And, uh, other than that, the, um, construction excise tax fund, uh, is pretty similar to the beginning fund balance, right now we have three hundred and forty-nine thousand through the end of September. Now, on the last report for ESER, um, as you can see, the ESER two report shows that we have an ending fund balance of zero dollars, and this is the one that ended on, at the end of September. And for ESER three, uh, what I did, we have the encumbrances for all the positions that we are funding right now with ESER three, and I also added under the encumbrances, the approved capital projects that we have right now, like the H-bag for TMS, and the PS roofing, and then also some other, um, planned expenses for capital projects and other programs that we are planning to have, uh, paid with ESER dollars, hopefully. Um, so as you can see, you know, right now we have an ending fund balance, or an ending balance that, uh, is still unassigned of seven hundred thirty-two thousand, so the administration is working hard to make sure that we spend the full amount. And I think that's it for me. If you have any questions?
What's the deadline for ESER three?
It's September thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. So we have a whole year.
Yeah, but that's gonna go by fast.
It'll go by fast, and there will be options, there's a lot of talk about extending that, especially if there's, uh, projects in eh, uh, in process, and there, uh, I just heard from COSA, um, which is our administrative kind of body of the state, you've heard the OSBA, and COSA is for administrators, uh, that they could be even freeing up it up even more, to have some, um, other options to carry some funding over for, I think it was eighteen months, maybe, they were talking about?
I believe so, we had a, a project, eh, in the works, or it was mid way by September thirtieth, they weren't going to just cut off the funding, but you can apply to carry over those funds up to eighteen months to finish off your project, so hopefully, we get that.
And then, at the general fund page, I was trying to pay attention, the six hundred eighty thousand two sixty-four at the beginning fund balance is because of the house bill funds, you're not sure when they hit, is that, remind me what the six eighty two sixty-four in parentheses, difference between?
Oh, the difference between the two beginning fund balances, this is just what it shows you, that the beginning fund balance at the beginning of last year was seven million five hundred sixty-seven thousand, and the beginning fund balance at the beginning of this, the current year, is six million eight eighty-six. It's just showing you the difference between the two years, yeah.
All right.
Yeah, the, the, what I was talking about, the state school fund, it's actually on the revenues, it has a number one. So the, the adopted budget was seventeen million eight hundred thousand, and on the projection, I'm showing eighteen million four hundred sixty-three thousand, and it's because of the difference on the funding, from nine point nine billion to ten point two.
Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome. Any other question?
I don't have a question, but I would just like to thank you for all of your time spent with toward it, but also with bargaining, there was a lot of questions, and, and, you know, we thought we had an answer, and then we come back to you, and I, I just really appreciate, um, how well you explain everything, and how fast you come up with stuff, because I, it would take me like a hundred days. So I really do appreciate, um, all that you've done, because I know it's really busy with the finance, and then with bargaining, so I just wanted you to know that I, and I'm sure everyone up here really, really appreciates that, what you do.
Thank you, appreciate it, yeah, my department works really hard, and I wanted to give a shout out to Amy, and just all your support and good energy, because we do have a, a lot of work ahead of us this payroll. So, yeah, just send her some good vibes and notes if you can, she really needs them, thank you so much.
Anything else about this? Thank you, I do second what you're saying, she's pretty magical to have in our district, we're so lucky. Um, legislative and OSBA update.
I will start, thank you all for coming to the, um, road show, I appreciate it, and I think that, um, it was really good, we will have another regional time to talk regionally at, um, the conference that I know we're all going to, and pretty much, I think that, I don't really have anything to add, oh, wait, we do, Sarah's gonna tell me, do you wanna talk about it?
Okay, Sarah's gonna talk. Yay.
So we said this at just Dawn brought it up briefly at the Road Show and I've been supposed to send an email for two weeks. Save the date, Monday, January twenty-second, twenty twenty-four will be our legislators reception at Phoenix High School. We'll host. So we would love it if our student representatives were there and it will be a time where we invite in our region, there are nineteen? School boards?
I thought you were talking about.
There's, we'll say nineteen. That might, that number seventeen. Seventeen, seventeen school boards and all their members, their superintendents, and then we have seven legislators in our region and we invite all of them to come. And it gives us an opportunity to introduce ourselves, to advocate for education, to hear about what their plans are because they'll start introducing bills into the legislative short session, which will start February. It's February, right? The month of February. That's unfortunate. We'll say it's February and if it's wrong, we'll tell you later. So before they head up to Salem to start to do their work in this short session, it's helpful for us to tell them what what we want them to do for us, for you. So we have a time where we can get to know them. So we'll host it at the high school and you'll hear more about it, but right now is a save the date. We'll serve dinner. We'll have a little networking time. We'll let each of the invited representatives have a few minutes to talk about their priorities. And and then we may have some student groups come and present. We had Grants Pass High School's orchestra come and perform last time. And it was the first time we had done it. So we're hoping that now more school districts will participate with student involvement and engagement. So we're looking forward to that opportunity. And then legislative days are this next week up in Salem and just it might be an opportunity for us to look at what the legislators are planning to bring as far as bills for the next session and have connection with them or our voice heard or look at the impact to rural schools and anything that might be coming to the table. So.
I know Representative Representative McIntyre has picked up one bill, which you may not move forward on. But it is really important to have conversations because a lot of the times they pick up bills and they want to know more about it and give as much information as possible. So it is an important time. I think they're also having legislative day beginning of January too, and I don't know if they're having it in December or not. So I think it's a good time to keep an eye on.
I got an email from Greg and Carrie today who will be up there next week. And so if you hear anything or want them to listen in on, he said he has kind of a idea of where they're going to be throughout the week. Have, you know, individual meeting set up one with Brett McLean. And then there is a educations committee hearing. And so they'll sit in on that. So but if you hear anything else and you want him to put it here to the ground on something else, let me know and we can email him.
Well, a lot of us are driving up through Salem on Wednesday when they're having legislation days. So it might be something to organize as well. I don't know, but is that what you're gonna say?
We can certainly put them on that leg work and then say we're gonna have some members be driving up and if there's any opportunity to connect, that'd be great. Yeah, thank you.
Anything else? One more thing on Denise's plate.
I just want to remind you, I'll do it.
I was thinking before this meeting that I had to speak up and say thank you Denise for keeping us all together every day, everywhere. What would we do without her? Equity, diversity and inclusion update.
Hey, everyone. Hi, nice to see you. I'm Kelly Soder and I have a couple of things I'd love to give you an update on. If you don't mind, I'm gonna do some EDI updates, but also throw in a few other things. First and foremost, I don't think I was at the board meeting the last time we gave an update. And since the beginning of the year, we've started our second year of our EDI Advisory Committee. Just a reminder, you know, we're moving forward with that and in twenty twenty-five, next year, that will be required under the EEAC House Bill. We just have, I just want to just give thanks and gratefulness for the representation we have on our committee this year. I mean, I want to say double, maybe tripled the representation from last year, really invested folks that are coming already and just rich conversation around supporting our students, our youth, our community, our staff, and just really thinking about the experience that everyone has in our schools and and giving us really great feedback on that. And we'll work through a variety of things this year. One of which is that AR that we worked through last year came out of the seven kind of big priorities and ways in which we can give kind of feedback on our progress on those. The EDI committee will be involved in that all year long around that data collection and and where we are as we bring that to the board and share that with you at some point this year. We're also doing a book study and a couple of other pieces in there around opportunities for the committee to tell us topics and things that they would like to have potentially come to the committee for feedback. So it's just been really wonderful. So thank you for that opportunity to have us move forward with that. A couple of other things. Mr. Bullier talked about our student panorama survey. We just completed year two of our student survey. Staff administrators are really just kind of analyzing and digging in to see what they find. I love that Kent dug in to see already. And we have two years now. So part of what we'll look at is how we have seen growth or change from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three. That'll get really powerful as we do even more years. At some point, we will bring that to the board as well to share highlights, opportunities and successes in that data, but it's a really powerful way. One of our strategic goals is to elevate that voice. So we want to be sure that we're really clear about what are we doing with this information from students, right? You took time out of your day to fill out this survey for us. Now what will happen with it? Onto staff as well. We have a staff survey happening right now, also with panorama, some similar questions and even the same questions. So we'll be able to draw better conclusions or look for trends that we see with staff experience and student experience. The staff survey is still open for a week or so. We're hoping to get really good participation out of out of that as well. There's always a lot going on with community care. I'll just pick two things. You heard about the Dia de los Muertos tonight. It's just lovely and beautiful. I'm sure Joe got some wonderful photos as well. Countless hours to to get that put on. And as we left for the board meeting, the parking lot was full. People were pouring in. So I'm really excited to hear about that tonight. And just a shout out to Laura Mallett, Suzie Serna and the whole team that have really put that together. I want to give a shout out to Katie McCormick. She spearheaded our Thanksgiving support for families already and and set the goal of supporting sixty-five families. And just yesterday, she shared that she has found sponsors to cover one hundred percent of the food to put in our baskets. So we're thrilled about that and she's ready to move on to Christmas. So just huge support for that. And then I'm not sure if I've mentioned this last piece. We had some unexpected last minute support from ODE for bilingual teacher pathway support. I mean, it's kind of part of this last round of ESER. So we have until September twenty twenty-four to use, a short turnaround. It's meant for recruitment, retaining bilingual staff, supporting further education, training, collaboration time. So we have a couple of priorities in that. We have teachers that are working through OSU E-campus to complete their dual language specialization. It's very, it's a really wonderful program and gives them even more training and experience. It's expensive. It probably would have been prohibitive for them to participate and we're doing a hundred percent of tuition and their licensing fees to add the specialization to their endorsement. We also know that dual language teachers, as with all teachers, need time to get together. So part of those funds will be for providing additional time to release time and other opportunities after, you know, and all the creative ways for collaboration time because there's a lot to do always. So there's a couple of other things that we're doing with that bucket of money, but all really, really good things. I think that's about it. Any questions or any other thing, things to share?
Are there students on the district equity committee? Yes.
There are Ava Robinson and Brianna Gall and JJ Jimenez will be joining after football.
I wanted to say that I appreciate the newsletter. I love that update about what's happening for sure. And I don't know if we can share that with our student reps, but I I felt like there's good information in there that they may need to know about.
Yes.
Thank you.
I just want to clarify what EDI is because I've I know a little bit about it, but I'm sure I don't know.
Yeah.
What like what fully it is.
Yes, thank you. I apologize. Acronym heavy, right? It stands for equity, diversity and inclusion. So one of my jobs in the district is to think about that for students and staff and support things that are happening. And we have a community, school and district community committee that also does that. And I use too many acronyms. And so that is our committee that's supporting things around equity in our district. Experiences around equity, experiences around diversity and experiences around inclusion.
And I'm sure if you're curious about that or if you would like to join, just contact her.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the inter-district transfer report.
I think these are the numbers as of towards the end of October. We do, we are on the right side of this. Overall, we've we've had years where we've been on the wrong side completely. But, you know, we're on the plus side, so that that's good. You have chosen to just allow hardships out and a lot of these hardships are childcare. And some of the older, you know, students that are in the the higher grade levels, it's either a medical or a mental health qualification too, so that they qualify. And so those those were granted. But you'll see, we have a lot of students wanting to come to our district too that live outside of our district. So it's nice to be on the plus side for sure.
Are any of these families still fire impacted that do they have to be part of this list if they're fire impacted?
Yeah, they were fire impacted. We tried to do that the very first year if they were outside, just to get that done because we had some leniency with other districts. And so there there might be a few still here, but it's it's very few. Usually these are actually, you know, have permanent housing somewhere that, you know, are mid-year moves and they have, I still want to stay in our district. The also, we're not transporting as many students either. And so this, which is why this number is really nice to see on the plus side because they're finding transportation to to our schools. So.
Okay. Next, we're gonna move on to discussing our upcoming meetings. So I think we just need to take these one by one. Next meeting will be the Jab meeting, which is the, hmm, help me. Joint joint admin and board. So will we will we have student representatives at that meeting?
They don't, but they, but there's a lot of information if they wanted to join and basically what that, sorry.
Yeah, you can tell.
Basically, what that meeting is, is that the board just kind of listens and the admins or the principals from each school come and talk about what they're doing good, what they're having challenges on, the data of their school, what they plan to do for the year, like they want to get their enrollment up. I mean, their attendance up by so much percent. It's very interesting. Something that you wouldn't need to go to, but you probably learned something about your high school. But yeah, so basically we just learn and get educated from the principals of the district.
And we'll serve you dinner.
Oh, yeah.
And Armadillo Tech is also, they make a program report at that time. It's really interesting. For me, that's one of the ones I look forward to because you get to see more than just they accentuate the positive that they're sharing every time. It's a little bit more in depth on what they're actually doing and how the students are doing within the schools. Yeah.
So we'll make sure you get an invite and then you can just respond to Denise. We typically do that at the high school, which is a good venue for the reports, if that's something that we want to continue.
Yeah, because that's one of the things we have to decide. I was looking all over Denise for where, when it's attached at the bottom where it was and it's on the list of where we need to decide where to have that. So I don't know if anyone has any opinions about like other than the high school? No? Okay.
Sorry, I was just looking at the different meetings and areas that we're gonna be having these meetings and it seems like the high school is the least amount.
It's the upcoming schedule you're talking about, right?
In the twenty-three, twenty-four schedule.
It's just a nice area there and it's easy to set up and it's close for Chris. He doesn't have to go somewhere else. So then we could decide that it's the the high school, I guess.
Yeah, then we tend to really have that starting at five fifteen to six-ish for dinner and then we'll start the program.
Okay.
Rena?
What day would this be on?
So our board meetings come every other week. So.
Yeah. November sixteenth, yeah.
All right. And then a follow-up. It's okay. It's okay. And my follow-up question is, would we be just like, would we be just be listening or would be, would we be able to talk during that one?
That's a good question.
Yeah, I would say you could ask questions like we do. We don't, we won't be talking much, but if if there's a question that you have with someone presenting, you should be, yeah, you can ask them any question that you would like. But you won't have to do like a, this is what
No presentation.
You have to do a presentation. You don't have to talk, but if you have a question, yes, please ask it.
I think that that's a really important thing because as a student, when admin presents, I think we bring a lot of light to the statistics that they show from our side of the thing, from our perspective of things that they're showing how attendance is changing and how attendance is moving up or down. We can bring a lot to the table as far as that. So I think it's really important to hear a student's perspective on that.
A hundred percent. And I want to say we went to that OSBA thing on Monday and we're like an anomaly. We don't, we have student reps. A lot of boards don't have student reps. So I'm really proud that we do have that. Okay, um, we're moving on, right? I wasn't sure what if you had something. Okay. So at the high school, five fifteen start. And then the January eighteenth work session will be with Kristen Miles from OSBA. And she would like to start at five. And if I remember right, this is gonna be on online, right? Is she gonna be virtually joining us? Yeah. So and that will be probably at the district office, I would imagine, right? Okay.
Yeah, that that'd make it easier. We have the monitor in there and we'll do dinner as well there that night as well.
And this is board training and also the superintendent evaluation discussion, right?
That's with Kristen Miles too. And then if there's any other discussion that you want to have for our work session, we can add that if you feel like that fits in, but that's what our time with her is.
This is part of the board development to help student success, right? This, that's this conversation about how the board can. Right? Yes.
I think this came out of the summer conference.
Yes, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, the third item is the June twentieth board meeting. We need to change that date because Brent and the ad team have a conflict with the Seaside COSA conference that's going on. And it looks like we are proposing Monday, the twenty-fourth. So if you know what you're doing on Monday, the twenty-fourth and June of twenty twenty-four, of course, Dawn does.
I will not be in town.
Okay.
I may, I most likely um Minneapolis that weekend before, so I will probably be fine.
We also could do it earlier that week, either, I mean, a Tuesday. I don't think that Wednesday would work cuz that's probably a travel day, but the eighteenth might work. About this, how about, how about we just, we know we need to move it. We'll bring dates since it's not right around the corner. We'll bring dates and try to put that in for a a adjusted item later. Sounds good.
We just have that schedule on the thing.
Yeah, that's the fiftieth annual. Um and so it it's gonna be a pretty big deal and Craig Hawkins, the executive director is uh retiring uh from that organization who's been um in education and doing that sort of work for forty-plus years. So he's been really good to us and so we want to honor him at that time.
And then uh the fourth item is the special session for the certified contract approval um happening on the thirteenth, um maybe around lunchtime.
Yeah, I think we, if, if that's what tentatively um we have scheduled, if there needs to be some other time or people cannot make that, um there will only be one action item on that and that's uh um assuming SOBC approves the tentative agreements that we have. Then the board will, uh and I think their meeting is on the eighth. Uh and so we'd like to do that on the thirteenth, so we can have our staff start working on all the changes for this payroll.
So if someone can't make it, we just need to have a quorum, right?
The thirteenth of November.
Yes, yeah. So it'll be actually the Monday after our conference.
Sorry, did I say that wrong thing? Oh, oh, right.
I know it's hard to decipher, but like, how long do you think that that meeting would last?
I would, I mean, we could do it in fifteen minutes.
Like I can, I can attend. I can step off of work for a minute to attend that through a Zoom meeting.
Okay. Yeah, fifteen minutes, yeah.
Yeah, I think we'll just see the con, you can pre-read the contract and then if you have any questions, you can ask and then we, when we vote, it's not gonna be very long at all. I mean, that's all, Michael's gonna call or whoever's gonna call it to order. You can ask if you have any questions and then we're gonna vote for the contract and then be done.
So if, yeah, if we don't have any objections, we do have to um, so it's, that's before a weekend and actually a three-day weekend. So um we have to notice our public twenty-four hours in advance. It doesn't really qualify for a special meeting, so we have to notice it twenty-four hours in advance. And so I think we'll do that on Thursday before that weekend.
I think that's all for that area. And then uh next section would be the board policy BD, BDA, board meetings and regular board meetings.
The, I mean, not much. It's all red language, so um you can read through it. If you have any questions, let me know.
Do you want to say a little bit about what you mean by that for our folks down at the end?
Sorry, uh when we Polly, you are holding us accountable tonight.
When I first got here, I had no freaking idea what acronym. I mean, I was working for the state of Oregon, which is acronym soup, right? And I came here and it was even more. So that's why I always, I always kept him accountable for that.
So when we have board policies, um Denise organizes them. So if it's red language, it's essentially in law or legislation or uh um that is really kind of non-negotiable that that we have to approve. If it's green language, it's optional for us. Um and we can include it or we don't include it. Uh and then typically, if the staff recommends that it is included, we've moved it to the blue uh for the blue color. So um so that's how you, that's how, that's how we present it to the board. And when we do this, it needs to have two readings. So we have information and discussion. And then it'll go to action next meeting. Thank you, Polly.
Thank you.
Next meeting after JAB, cuz we won't make any.
We won't have any action, yeah.
There's always, so next thing is our JAB meeting, the joint admin and board meeting. So we won't do any of this stuff. We just get to hear what's happening. But did you guys get packets? Did, didn't, I'm sure, didn't, yes. With the packet. Okay, so all of those are in there and if you want to look at them, they're super fun and we just read through all millions of them. So they're super fun and interesting. All that legal documentation we can read through these so choose.
Would you guys want uh paper packets? Okay.
Really? Okay.
Okay. It's, okay, we we could have them ready for you for each meeting. So, yeah, you bet.
Go Denise. So any other questions about that, when we just talked about? The BD, BDA. Okay, we'll move on to the board policy BDC executive sessions.
This is mainly red language again, but there is some green language that we're not recommending. Just um typically, we don't recommend uh connecting it to another policy cuz if that policy moves or this policy, so um I don't think it's vital. And so we just recommended striking it.
Read it, that um there's new things that we can hold an executive session for. And then in January, the board will have a specific training that they'll have to do, so.
Thank you, Denise. You answered my question. I was like, okay, since we have to have a mandatory training in this certain time. So thank you for setting that up. I'm assuming you did that.
Okay, now on to the uh the last thing. We're gonna review the next meeting agenda if there's any questions about that. And I guess we'll be meeting at the high school and five fifteen start, I guess, is what we came to the conclusion of today.
Yeah, we put the order, we put um Armadillo Charter.
ACCS.
Yes, ACCS. Armadillo Committee Charter School, yeah. The, and I don't know if we really went into why they changed the name. Armadillo Technical Institute, they were, they're um what do they call it when they ask for feed, media or marketing? They were being um looked at as a community college, actually, a tech, a community college, technical institute. Um and so that's why they kind of changed the name to that cuz when they were out in the community, when they were raising money or they were just working in the community, that's what they thought. That the feedback they heard, so that's why they changed their name. And we have them starting off um mainly cuz Rachel's new and I, I, we usually have them last and I don't necessarily think it's fair to have her sit around, sit around and get nervous and nervous and nervous, just be done with it and go from there.
I have a question. Um last, I think it was last year or the year before, I can't remember, I apologize. We get a new format where the, which I thought was very helpful for me, um that they talked, that the principals talked about their challenges and how the board could support them. Is that still the plan?
We can certainly do that. We are talking about that Tuesday. So we can recommend.
Love that cuz we talked about like accentuate the positive, but we'd like to hear also the struggle. Yeah.
I, I think that worked and it was able to be a little vulnerable and up and then uh really having, how this board can support each of our building administrators. So we can follow that format. Thank you.
Okay, with that, we are adjourned.